I'm going to call the meeting to order and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under thy indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mayor Kransky. I am present. Moko?
Present.
Groko?
Present.
Kufal?
Present.
Padilla is absent tonight, and Iker?
Here.
Do we have any changes for tonight's agenda?
No changes.
Okay, then I need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting, February 21st. A motion made by Iker, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to comments, updates, concerns, do we have any citizens here to speak tonight? Council members, any updates? City staff? Okay, then we'll move on to tonight's consent agenda and take a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Groko, seconded by Iker, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public hearings, there is nothing tonight. Communication requests and petitions, we have information about the fire department pancake and scrambled egg breakfast, and the Gaylord Islanders Burger Bash. Moving on to department and committee reports and action items, the first one we have is under 9C on our agenda at the Public Works Department, and we'll invite Ty up to the podium.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
The first thing I have is just to have a little discussion about the public alert system that was mentioned last meeting. As for some of the flexibility, I know the council gave consent to put all the customers on that, on that system. Right now, we have about 800 customers that are on that alert system. As far as flexibility, it, this alarm system is kind of, it's built for small towns, so there's not a whole lot of modification you can do to it, and filtering and stuff like that, so usually for like water leak, snow emergencies, things like that, we usually just send it to everybody because it's that much easier. If we were trying to detail out people that take off or put on, there are 79 pages of names you'd have to go through and there's no way to really sort those out unless you go through them page at a time. So our thought was to, I know it was kind of mentioned last meeting, to send out a message to everybody that if they do want to opt out, they're more than welcome to. They can call City Hall, they can text City Hall, or just show up and say they want their name removed, but the way this is set up, if they get their name removed, they're going to have to get it removed from all the alerts. So either you get the alerts or you don't get the alerts. That's just kind of how, it's so hard to separate them, it'd take forever to, to delete people off for specific alerts, so. That's just kind of how it works. Like I said, they have more sophisticated alarms and alert systems, but those cost a lot more money. We're kind of on the, on a kind of a small town style one, so originally we had bought this, or purchased this first for snow emergencies mainly, and maybe water leaks and stuff like that, and now we're kind of expanding that a little bit for leak notices and that kind of thing, so. It's not really tailored exactly to that, but that's what we're using it for, so. Just to give you a heads up on kind of how that works. Does anybody have any questions about the public alert?
So you'd send the letters out to everybody, and if somebody opts out of it, they're just completely out, they're not going to get any?
Correct. Yep.
And I'm fine with that.
And I just, I want to point out too, as far as long as we've been doing this, we haven't, the first complaint we got was from last month, so.
Yeah, I would just make sure everyone knows that if they-
That if they opt out, they're not getting any alert.
Can you do it in a text, all the people that you text?
Yes.
Normally, they can just-
Yep.
Hit unsubscribe or whatever.
Yeah, so this, this one, they can't unsubscribe, so they'd actually have to come up here or call City Hall, and then we'd just take them off the list, so.
Sounds good. Thank you for looking into that. Moving on to 9C2, we have resignation.
Yeah, so last week, Leighton gave us his resignation. His last day will be Friday. I just have the council approve of that resignation, and just want to go through the public utilities operator disposition description really quick for a couple of small changes.
First, we'll take a motion to accept Leighton Rose's resignation. And just direct staff to commence the process to fill the vacancy.
So moved.
Motion by Kufal, do we have a second?
I'll second him.
Seconded by Groko, any further discussion or comments? I just want to thank Leighton for your years of service.
Yes, thank you.
And wish you best of luck in your new position and your new endeavors.
If you don't mind, I just want to say thank you for the opportunities. I definitely live here, and I work a lot for Ty, and my dad, and Tom as well, and Buck for that, so. I'll send on that, so again, thank you for the opportunities, so.
You're welcome. Good luck. Okay, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we can move on to the position.
Sure.
Description.
Does everybody have a copy of the position description? The only thing I, I, just, it's just a small tweak. It's on page three or four for the minimum qualifications. Right now, it says the ability of saying, obtain a Class C water license within one year of higher. To get a Class C water license, you have to have three years of experience before you can even test. Also, the class, the next line, the Class D wastewater license says with one, one year of higher. Class D, you need one years of experience. So I'd like to change both of those, just a little tweak, instead of one year of, one year of higher on both of them, I'd like to put within six months of eligibility, so as soon as they're eligible for that license, they have six months to, to get that license.
Would the calendar always work if it was only six months?
Yes. Yep, yep.
A hold of the classes enough?
Yes, yep.
Any other changes, or was it just these two?
Just the very front page on the top, I know, I don't think it was ever updated, the pay grade should be nine instead of six.
Do we need a motion to approve those changes?
It's nine.
It's got nine.
Oh, it does, the new one does? Okay. Mine said six still, so.
Do you want a motion to approve those changes, or just consensus that?
We would need to make a motion to amend the job description for disposition as proposed.
So then we're looking for a motion to-
So moved.
Okay, motion by Iker, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Moko, any further discussion or comments? Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Do we need to decide when we want to post that job? Do we want to wait until Monday? Do we want to do it tomorrow, Friday?
I would suggest we just try to do it right away.
Yeah.
So that's what-
As possible.
Okay, okay. Alright.
Anything else on that? Then we'll move to 9C3, we have a park and recreation board resignation.
Yep, received an email from Margie Swanson before the last meeting, park board meeting, stating that she is resigning from the park board, and I know she's been on the parks, the parks and trails, that kind of stuff, so I don't know if she's got anything going on, but her husband has not resigned yet, so. I don't know, she must have something, something else going on, so. And I did email her back and told her thank you for all the work that she's done over the years. She's, her and her husband have done a lot of tree planting and stuff throughout the, especially trails and that kind of stuff, so.
Yes, they have, we certainly appreciate both of their work on that, that committee. So we need a motion to accept Margie Swanson's resignation from the Parks and Rec Board.
So moved.
Motion by Groko, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal, any further discussion or comments? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Does anybody have anything for me?
Keep up the good work.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the fire department, not under 9F on our agenda. I don't see Justin here, but we have under 9F1, a firefighter retirement. Looks like Darren Reed.
Darren Reed has spent his resignation to resign. Or retire, I should say, from the fire department, pardon me. 24 years of service on the fire department.
Pretty impressive. So we need a motion to approve the retirement of Darren Reed from the fire department.
So moved.
Did I say that wrong? Motion. Motion by Kufal, seconded by Iker, any further discussion or comments? Just want to thank Darren again for his many years of service, and wish him luck in his retirement from the department.
He will be missed.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, under 9F2, city donation for the Gaylord Fire Relief Association. Go ahead.
Yep, this is actually an item that we have budgeted in the past, as well as this year, and so, city has traditionally donated to the pension of the fire department, so again, it's the same dollar amount as we've done in the past, $5,200.
We need a motion to approve the donation of $5,200 to the Gaylord Fire Department Relief Association. Motion by Mo, or, I'm sorry, by Iker, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Groko, any further discussion or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll abstain.
Kufal abstains. Motion carried. Moving on to the library, we have the, under 9G1, Travis Desu Library Cooperative Membership Agreement.
Yeah, Travis Desu Library Cooperative, or library system has, is proposing to update their agreement with their memberships, and so in your packet, starting on page 77, is the updated agreement. This, as you know, we do have to pay an annual amount to the TS, TDS, I think our budget right now is about $11,000 is what we pay into the system. But basically, we do get a lot of benefits from them as well. This particular agreement does renew automatically annually, and so in January, unless either party, of course, would contact the other, but we've, as you know, this is our library system, this is who we are, go with, so this is just an updated agreement between the parties.
And we need a motion to approve the cooperative membership agreement with Travis Desu.
So moved.
Motion by Moko, seconded by Iker, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving along to 9H, city engineer, we have Justin Black here to talk with us about resolution number 2024-10.
Alright, good evening, mayor and council. Just by way of introduction, Justin Black, city engineer. The action item for tonight is a resolution approving plans and specs and ordering and advertisement for bids for the 2024 project. And I've got a few slides I'd like to share with the council, just reviewing some of the highlights of the project, we'll talk a little bit about the project locations, some of the improvements we're making, the costs, and updated assessment amount, and then the schedule for the project. So with no further delay, just outlining some of the goals of the project, we're improving the driving service and extending that pavement life, and for the most part, the scope of work is pavement improvements, but there is some drainage improvements, some pipe work that I'll, I'll talk about, but for the most part, it's surfacing. So the first map here, at the top, is Railroad Avenue, and we're improving that street from Third Street all the way over to Tower Street. That'll be a reclaim and overlay project, and then at the bottom of the map, north is to the right, is Tower Street, and we're improving that entire segment by reconstruction. One thing I'd like to point out, if you take a look at the small road segment between Railroad Avenue and State Highway 5, there's just a little piece of road there. You didn't see that on some of the earlier maps, we included that as part of the final design, that is part of Tower Street, it's under the city's ownership, so we wanted to include that piece now, so it's not an orphan segment later on, it's just a short piece of roadway, so that'll be included as part of the overall project. Moving to the downtown area, in the upper left-hand corner there, the, the blue shaded areas is Fifth Street and Jefferson Avenue, on those about four and a half blocks, we're doing that one inch overlay just to preserve that existing pavement. The next area south of that, the pink shaded area, is what we're calling the Emmanuel Lutheran Alley from Fourth to Fifth. Below that is what we're calling the library alley, again, from Fourth to Fifth, and the library parking lot. Going further south, we have the post office parking lot, and then the post office alley between Third and Fourth Street. Just getting a little bit into the details here of the project, for Railroad Avenue, it'll be what we call a reclaim and overlay, so we're grinding up that existing pavement, and we're putting new, six and a half inches of new pavement over the top, which will result in a truck route design, a 10-ton truck route design. We are doing some drainage improvements, we're cleaning the ditches out there, we're replacing the culverts under the driveways, and we are adding some curb and gutter on the very east end, so there's a, a couple of segments where the grades were such that adding the curb and gutter will really improve the drainage along the edge of the roadway. So we're, we're including that as part of the project, so it won't be the whole length, but just on the east end, and then we are installing some drain tile. For the most part, it'll be just short-term closures, while the contractor should be able to maintain traffic to the businesses for the duration of the project. Tower Street is a little different story, that's a complete street reconstruction, as you recall, we did some soil borings out there, and there's really no base material under that roadway, so we're going to have to go in and completely subcut the roadway, dig down about three feet, but we are building it to a 10-ton truck route design standard. There's an existing guard rail out there, and during the design process, in reviewing that guard rail, it doesn't meet standards, it's too short, and in reconstructing the roadway, it would be hard to maintain that existing guard rail in, in the location where it's at, so we are replacing it as part of the project. No utility improvements, all of the sewer and water is outside of the street road core, so just again, surfacing improvements. Now the street, in this case, because we are doing the subcut excavation, will be closed, so we'll have to work with Michael Foods for an alternate access route. What we're proposing to do is complete the subcut of the roadway and build it back up to at least a gravel surface, and we're hoping that we can get that done in about seven to 10 days, and then the trucks can use the gravel roadway, and then we'll come back and pave it at a later date. So we're trying to minimize that closure by building it in stages, if you will. Parking lots, the library parking lot will be a reclaim and overlay, we'll grind up that pavement, turn it back to gravel, and then pave four inches of new bituminous over the top of it. In that library parking lot, we'll be replacing the curb and gutter and the sidewalk around the entire parking lot area, and then striping the parking lot, including a handicap stall. One thing I didn't note in here is the, the library only parking signs, we did talk about that, and those will be posted as part of the project. There'll be some closures during phases of that work. Post office parking lot, really a similar type of, of project with the reclaim and overlay, we'll be replacing that center concrete median, re-striping the lot, and when I say closures during phases of the work, we anticipate it'll be, probably be closed the day they come in and remove that pavement. There'll probably be a few days of closure when they're doing some of that concrete work, and then when they come back and pave, it'll probably be a couple more days of closure. So for the most part, some starts and stops, and we'll do our best to notify downtown business owners and post updates on the city's website, so people know what's going on. When we get to the library alley, again, that same reclaim and overlay process, there is curb and gutter in the library alley, and we're replacing all of it, and we're adding some additional alley gutter just to improve the drainage, there's some areas that don't drain real well. Again, kind of that start and stop closure, where there'll be certain days when the library alley will be closed, but then hopefully open more often than not. Same situation with the post office alley. One thing we talked about earlier on with the post office alley, on the west end here, there's some areas where the alley doesn't drain real well, and we did have some comments from some of the business owners that they're getting some water in their basement. We're going to be adding a bituminous curb along the edge of the alley to direct that flow down the alley, so that it's not standing there and running into the building basement, so an improvement that will, will help alleviate some of that drainage issue. The Emmanuel Alley is the outlier, again, when we did soil borings, not a lot of base under that alley, so this is going to be a complete reconstruction, we'll be digging out the underlying soils and putting in a new gravel base. The closures here will be a little bit longer, just because of the, the work that needs to be done. Also, we're adding some storm sewer improvements, connections to the church roof leaders, we have met with the church and talked about some of their drainage issues. We're also going to add a catch basin drain in the alley near the back church door. All of that storm sewer piping will be extended to the Jefferson and Fifth intersection. Jefferson and Fifth, one inch overlay, as we've talked in the past, we're trying to stretch out a little bit the timeline of the, the road. It's a maintenance project, no assessments, no curb replacement, and again, just trying to preserve that existing pavement that's out there. From a cost standpoint, here's all of the projects in what we're calling the base bid. Railroad Avenue rises to the top is the, the most costly, about 1.4 million, and then you can see the, the parking lots and alleys on down the line total to just over $2 million, so that's the base project. As you recall, we are proposing that the Tower Street be an alternate, that's $460,000 is what we're estimating that at for a total project to cost two and a half million. Again, the alternate is identified in the plans and to the bidder, once the bids are received, we'll bring the final cost back to the council, and the council can decide whether you want to include that alternate or exclude it. Maybe one other thing I'll point out on the cost estimate, about in the middle of the page, the Emmanuel Alley, Emmanuel Alley a little bit more expensive than the other alleys, just because of the reconstruction work we're doing and the storm sewer that we're adding. I'm not going to go into great detail in the funding summary, I know Steve's got an agenda item coming up to talk more about those details. One thing I will highlight is the special assessments, we're assessing $730,000, so almost 30% of the project is going to be assessed to the property owners. Schedule, here we are, tonight presenting final plans on February 21st. The council, by resolution, will set a bid opening date for March 21st. For this particular project, we are proposing to have the assessment hearing prior to awards, so we'll open bids, we'll bring them to the council, and the council will just table that bids, and then we will send out notices and call for an assessment hearing. That assessment hearing will be on May 1st. That evening, depending if we get any appeals to the assessments, the council could consider awarding. If there are appeals, you can delay the award until a future meeting, as we work through the appeal process with anyone that chooses to appeal the assessments. So this process will give you a little bit more flexibility, in case you do get appeals as to how you want to move forward with base bid and alternate. Construction, we're looking at a June to August timeline, like I said, there'll be some starts and stops during the construction, mostly pavement work, but we're looking for a substantial completion end of August, and probably final completion early September with some of the seating and restoration work. Be happy to answer any questions, otherwise, the action item is the resolution. Counselor Moko?
Isn't there, is there sanitary sewer that needs to be looked at yet in that church alley, or is it good, or do we-
It is, so the, the sanitary sewer in both alleys, the church alley and the post office alley were televised, and they're both in working condition, they are clay pipe, so at some point in time, we discussed doing a lining project where they can come in and line it, that'll be a future project, but right now, there's no need for any repairs, that's something that we took a look at.
There's no other questions, we're looking for a motion to approve resolution number 2024-10, approving the plans and specifications and ordering and advertisement bids. We have a motion by Iker, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal, any further discussion, comments, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Madam mayor, if I could have the floor one more time, just for some updates-
Sure.
On a few projects. There's been quite a bit of activity out the stormwater pond, they have finished all of the riprap placement, but it's quite a mess out there, they've got some restoration work to do, and they'll, they'll do some of that now, and then they'll come back later this spring, early summer, and complete some of the final seating, so we've had some nice weather, it would have been nice to have some colder weather, so the ground would have been a little bit more frozen, but we got the project done. We don't have all of the final quantities in, but right now, it looks like we're going to be under budget on the project overall. So we'll bring that forward to the council at a future meeting as far as a pay application, but things are tracking under budget. One other update that I would like to give to the council, some of you may know John Roderberg. John retired here a couple of weeks ago. As part of that retirement, I've been moved to the office manager position in the Hutchinson office. That won't change anything that's happening here in Gaylord, as far as the way that I serve you as city engineer, but I wanted to provide that update. For some of the folks, John's retirement might have sounded abrupt, it wasn't, we've been transitioning that retirement over about a year. So behind the scenes, we've been moving towards his retirement here, so it, it was a smooth transition, and he will be coming back a day or two a month, so you might see him once in a while, but for the most part, he's riding off into the sunset, so good for him. That's all I had.
Congratulations on, to him on his retirement, and you on your new responsibilities and duties.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to unfinished business, 10A, we have the Oaks Lakeside Pavilion rental policy.
So as you recall at our last council meeting, we did look at a draft of this rental policy for the pavilion. The council at that meeting did agree that we would go out, or we would start taking reservations, effective May 1st of this year. They also, one of the changes that you made was to eliminate the non-resident fee, so we're just going to have one fee, one rental fee, doesn't matter where you live, if you're in town or out of town, so that, that's been adjusted as well. Some of the questions that you had at the meeting, I'll, I'll address these, they were, we had a long discussion about alcohol events, and you had inquired about, you know, from a, we talked about the local establishments, that what they would provide the on-sale service for an event, and you inquired about, you know, how many people needed to attend the event to make it worthwhile for them, and so I have had a chance to reach out to them. We currently have 50 in the policy, and their responses was, that's adequate for now. It might take some, just events to see how this goes. One of the things I did say is, how they would like to do it is, you know, working with whoever's renting it for the event, that they would have to purchase the alcohol in advance, meaning if they're going to have a keg, they got to buy the keg, if they're going to have liquor, then they have to identify how many bottles of liquor they're going to have for their event, and then pay for it upfront. So that's, they've done that, they've sounded like they've had experience with that, how they've done events in the past, so. I heard that from more than one of the establishments, that's how they do their, those types of events. Secondly, you asked about the cost for liability insurance, so for somebody that has to get their own liability insurance for an event, liquor liability, I spoke to one of our local insurance agencies about that, and they informed me that there is such a thing is, under a homeowner's policy, that they can, it's referred to as host liquor liability, and it's off of your homeowners, and most, most households carry, or most, most households in their policy carry $300,000 of coverage, so that would fall under that category. So that would fall under that category, some also even up to $500,000. So pretty standard for most policies that care $300,000 in a homeowner's policy. One of the things we can discuss here too, as part of setting this policy that kind of leads into this, is that does the council want to set a specific liquor liability coverage requirement? That they'd have to provide so much cover for whatever their event is. Again, these would be for events where they would not have our local establishment, whoever we designate for that, that they would be providing the on-sale. This would be for their events. This would be also, I should mention, this would be for events that they're not actually selling the alcohol at. That's, that's a big important thing to mention here. For their homeowner's policy, it would be events that they would not be selling the alcohol. So they have that in there. If they're going to be selling the alcohol, and again, if they're not using our establishment that we designated, then they would have to have special event liquor liability coverage for that. So it was shared that right now under state law, that only allows up to $50,000 coverage unless the city would have something in its code or ordinance that specifies that we are going to require something more than state statute. We actually have to take the, we have to adopt something that would require something more than that. Again, it's only $50,000 for if they're having the sale of alcohol at their event.
Mark, what would you suggest?
So if I'm understanding what you're saying, Steve, you're saying that basically statute says we have to require at least $50,000 in access coverage. And from the research you did with the insurance agent, you said it's typical for policies to have as much as $300,000.
That's under the homeowner's.
Oh, so this is separate for the bar?
This is separate from that. So this is for events that they're actually selling the alcohol. So this would be like the renter selling the alcohol versus, you know, if we had an establishment come in, our designated establishment coming in, where their liquor liability would cover the whole thing, this is something different.
Well, I mean, if the statute is $50,000, that's not a ton of coverage, obviously. But it's the minimum threshold in terms of what we're obligated to require. So we certainly could go above and beyond and I guess as a sense of duty in these circumstances. But our only obligation is to do $50,000. So that being said, it's kind of underinsured, so.
If one of our establishments isn't bringing it in though, how can anybody else sell it? I mean, I can't go in there and rent it and bring booze in there and sell it, can I? Because I don't have a license to, for sale like that. So how would?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point.
How would anybody be able to do that if they want, right?
I would think if you got maybe contact another establishment that has a liquor license to come to sell, they would have a liquor license.
Well, that's what I would say, like if you got any locals too, they're going to cover it.
Yeah, there'd be some, somebody from another town who has a liquor license and they're going to sell the liquor at your event. They would have a liability insurance as well.
You could go as far as, you know, if there is going to be alcohol being sold, that we could just simply make it a requirement that they have to then use our, whoever our designated establishment is.
I like that.
I would say, yeah, I don't think.
I think that's probably a more seamless route to go rather than trying to mess around with everybody buying their own.
And then if it's just bring your own, somebody's having a gathering and everybody's bringing their own, then it would have to fall under that, under the homeowner's, under that whole liability.
That would be it, yeah. A lot of people that would work for them. We would still want to see some proof of insurance then too. That's one of the things we always require. We want us to have that with the application, that they're going to provide proof of their insurance for the event, that they're going to be serving alcohol. Because without that, we could be liable then. We could be held liable. I mean, we're always going to be hanging out there. We own the property. It's always going to be there. But at least we require them, you know, a lot of times what we could do too is be listed as an additional insured. For the individual, it doesn't cost them anything more to list us and we could make that a requirement then too.
Yeah, I mean, that list, requiring the city to be listed as an additional insured is probably a good belt and suspender, no matter what. But in terms of, I think the way the city should approach this is just in every circumstance where there's going to be alcohol served, whether it be smaller party or party over 50 people, that there is another insurance policy that doesn't read City of Gaylord, that it's somebody else's insurance policy that the claim first would be made against. So to Steve's point, it's likely that if there's an issue, city would get dragged into it. And the only real way that it could become a problem for the city is if the other parties are underinsured. And then they obviously start looking for other deep pockets if there's not enough insurance otherwise. So based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like the way that, that it's being proposed for this to be structured is that in any circumstance, we're going to have an adequate insurance policy in place so that the city doesn't have to step in and essentially be the defendant. So I feel, I mean, I feel, if I'm understanding what Steve is saying about this proposal, I feel comfortable in terms of insurance coverage, the city moving forward with this.
So it's either the establishment that's coming in there is going to have the insurance or the individual rent in it is going to have to show proof of insurance to their homeowners or however they obtain it.
Mm-hmm.
Cool, okay.
There was also a question in regards to what would it cost for an individual, you know, for them to get that, their own liability insurance for a specific event. What I was quoted is about $125. I have spoken also, I've spoken to EJ's, Nisance and American Legion and all three are interested. They all three also agreed that, you know, they would be open to taking turns where one would do it one year and then they would rotate accordingly. So that was nice. Then we don't have to go out, try to get bids or whatever, anything like that. So they're, that way they're just simply sharing in it.
Any other changes?
Well, why didn't, in the, under the fee schedule, why does it still say Gaylord Residence, $600?
Oh, I can just change that, sorry. I took out the non-resident, but I left the Gaylord in there. I'll just, I'll change that. One other thing I wanted to just bring up to, for your consideration is whether or not you want to require a fee for any kind of school events related, nonprofit civic organizations, if they were utilizing the facility for whatever reason, do you want to charge them a fee as well?
That's tough because I know like Music Under the Oaks is going to be, I mean, this summer, in case of rain, they've been using local churches to hold their events. Are we going to charge them, you know, $600 if it rains and they have to move it inside?
Isn't that kind of like a city event though?
That's true. It is a city. That was maybe a bad example.
Because we wouldn't charge ourselves.
I think, I think you'd want to.
About a chamber, chambers, well.
I think, I think you'd want to charge it a little something, wouldn't you? Because you're going to have cleanup. No matter who has the event in there, you're still going to have, the place is going to have to be cleaned.
And I think it's different too, you know, if we, the chamber wants to host something there during the week when the pavilion typically isn't getting used. You know, I think a minimal fee to cover our costs would be reasonable. So I think that's part of the timing too, if it's a, not in high demand. But then I also know like the school for instance is, you know, if they want to have the prom there, they have a limited budget too. Do we want to give them any kind of break?
Well, Music Under the Oaks, they're already using our band shell in the.
Right.
I mean, they're going to want to use that, I suppose, if it does look like rain. I mean, I'd be for putting an exception in there for the chamber for that specific event, you know. And they would, I think they would do the right thing and clean up, you know.
Well, I think to a degree too, right. But like mopping the floor and stuff, if it's raining, obviously it's going to get tracked in there. That's going to have to be mopped or cleaned or.
But they're, they're running on all volunteer donations coming in too. If we, if we charge them, they're just have to probably cancel the event maybe.
I don't have a problem not charging them, but I'm thinking like the school, maybe not necessarily charging the full amount, give them a reduced rate to at least cover some of the cleaning expense. Because if we're going to hire outside cleaning crews, we got to pay them. So that should be, that's my thought anyway.
The thing about events for youth, we don't have to worry about alcohol use, which. I don't know. Do we do half price for youth events or school events?
Sure.
Any other ideas? I just throw that out there.
Youth and civic organizations.
What about the damage deposit? Leave that as is?
Yeah, because they'll get that back.
They'll get it back, yeah, okay.
Some cities I've seen for nonprofits, if they're not local, they might try, make them pay the whole fee. Just throwing it out there.
I'm guessing they're mostly going to just be approached by the local slash school district. I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve Oaks Lakeside Pavilion rental policy with said changes discussed.
Motion by Mokel, seconded by Eaker. Any further discussion?
Let me just ask, since we're here, what about, say the county wants to use it for any reason? Would that fall into that same category where it'd be one half?
No, they get charged double.
So you want to add local government to it as well? That's fine.
I think.
What did you say about the deposit? Did you guys agree on that?
Just leave it as is because they're going to get it back.
So that would be still a requirement, okay, for everybody?
Was, about anything on the question of decorating, putting up hooks in there somewhere? We had all those limitations on there with tape and everything. Then I brought out, would it be possible to have hooks put up throughout there that stay? Where they could hang things from? Because right now, as it is, there's only, they can't use anything to hang decorations. If somebody wants to have a wedding in there, they're going to want decorations.
It might be worth it to consult with someone good at decorating as far as where those, I mean, I think anything that's put in should be put in by the city.
Right, permanent hooks and that are decent looking and that's where they can hang.
I know one of our P and Z members, I don't know if she still decorates for weddings, but she might be a good person to be a resource for us.
I'll amend my motion to include local government.
I'll amend my second.
Okay. Anything else? Then all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to new business, 11A petition request for reconsideration.
I can start this out.
Okay, go ahead.
You'll recall from the last city council meeting, we had Alex DeValle here, DeValle Companies, with a proposal for a housing development project over at the intersection of Melrose and Lincoln Avenue. And the council took motion to approve supporting that project by providing the land, which he was, at the meeting, he was requesting for .77 acres. It may be just a little bit more of that because we were going to be taking a look at the stormwater pond needs. And so that was to be determined, but basically roughly around an acre of land. And the council, again, agreed to, with a motion to go ahead and apply for a workforce housing grant through Minnesota Housing, which is a matching grant. Again, Alex DeValle, he was proposing, this was going to be a $4 million project. He was looking at, he requested that we apply for $1 million. City would be the applicant. Again, this is a matching grant, so we would have to, there'd be a $500,000 match. City's only financial commitment was the land. The rest, he would have to come up with the resources for the match. Since that meeting, Leighton Rose, who's standing right here, he had went around and got a petition signed for the city council to reconsider the location of that proposed housing development, again, at the intersection of Lincoln and Melrose. So they had a few things that they were requesting for consideration and the reasons for that reconsideration was, I'll just read this real quick, was that there is a, they believe that there would be a negative impact on the property values, greatly increase the foot traffic through a currently quiet neighborhood as well as add light pollution. So there's 80 signatures on this. And so that's a quick summary. I did ask Mark here to just kind of, as far as what's our legal requirements when it comes to receiving a petition of this nature. And so if it's okay, I'd like Mark to address that for us.
Sure, thank you, Steve. So I guess kind of the input that Steve had asked me to provide was what is the city required to do when they receive a petition like this? And you kind of look at it in terms of like two boxes. There's the one box in terms of, does this trigger any mandatory response from the city? Something that we have to do? And I guess in relation to that question, it really boils down to what Chapter 5 of the city charter states. And there's no indication that this reference petition was intended to comply with the city's petition for referendum requirements in the city's charter. Accordingly, it's a deficient petition. It doesn't rise to the level. It doesn't meet the requirements of Chapter 5. So in terms of what we have to do, the city council doesn't have to reassess the, whatever approvals that Steve had just mentioned as a result of receiving this petition. Now, from like a permissive standpoint, you certainly can take input from citizens. And I guess I can turn it over to Mr. Rose for him to provide the input that he wants. But you should just understand that, you know, based upon what is stated in the petition, those are not reasonable bases for the city to be making land use decisions on. In terms of like a speculative assertion that this is going to have a negative effect on property values, sometimes you'll hear people characterize it as a not in my backyard mentality and NIMBA. That is not a justified reason for the city to be making a land use decision. In terms of the other two issues, again, those are speculative in nature. There's nothing to suggest that this would overwhelm any sort of pedestrian foot traffic or create, you know, this, this huge nuisance of light pollution. But city council can certainly take those concerns, give the staff and myself direction as we're working on this project. And those are the types of things that you can use mitigation efforts to try and make sure that there's adequate infrastructure for the foot traffic and that this is designed in a way that it won't create light pollution. So in terms of tonight, you can certainly open the floor for a limited amount of time for Mr. Rose to provide some input. Citizen input's always a good thing, but in terms of what the council has to do, you're not required to reassess the approvals we've already done. And I guess it would be my legal direction that it probably is not advisable to go back and change your mind on the approval based upon what's being suggested tonight. So I guess I can turn it over to Mr. Rose. We're going to probably limit your comments to two minutes. That's, Mayor?
Yeah, I want to keep this short and sweet. I mean, just to address, I mean, I'm not looking to drag this on or create like a lawsuit or anything like that. I want to kind of just simply ask for reconsideration. I mean, obviously we've got a couple of things here. Ultimately, it just doesn't seem to make sense. I'm going to refer back to November when Mr. DeValle was first here. Chad made the mention that it doesn't make sense on Third Street. And so my question ultimately is why does it make sense where it's going? Third Street, you got rental units already. And so how's it make any more sense to put it out in a mostly single level, low density neighborhood? Ultimately, we're not against this. Honestly, I'm very for this. I've talked to Steve back to June and July about this grant actually. So this is something that, I mean, this goes back a while. I'm all for it. It's just a matter of having a good plan with what housing we already have in Gaylord. And then you're putting something that's higher density out near already what's a low density neighborhood. I mean, obviously like Mr. Mark here said, I guess we're not asking for you to make a decision necessarily, just to consider what us in town and, you know, the voters and people who live here full time and what we are valued at here. You know, we, I live out there. I picked that neighborhood because it's a nice, quiet area, low density. Again, nice neighborhood. I've looked at other houses on the other end of town where you do have some of these. some of these apartments, and nothing against them, there's, I mean, Wolverine Meadows is a great product there, but ultimately, that's not where I wanna live, and a lot of the people who signed this, I mean, one person, he actually moved from St. Peter, he lived across the street from an apartment, and he decided to move here because it was a quieter neighborhood, and, I mean, when him and I talked about it, he was actually pretty upset that now this is coming right where he moved here, which is why he moved here. I know I've spoken to you, and I'm getting close to two minutes here, so I'm gonna try and wrap it up, but I know I've spoken to some of you individually about this, just to kind of throw the idea out there, I don't wanna get any kind of misunderstanding, you know, so I think most of you kind of see where I'm coming from, hopefully, not that we're against it, just simply just moving it south, so it ain't button up against what's a low density, mostly single family neighborhood. I mean, you got privacy issues, you know, when you're going three stories high, going over single family neighborhoods and stuff like that, so that's gotta be pretty close to two minutes, so I'll let you guys, if you have any questions, I mean, I can go on, but I don't wanna, I have respect for your time too, so.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything you guys wanna ask, or thoughts, or, Mr. DeValle, obviously couldn't make it tonight, and I, I mean, I would have loved to hear his input as far as, I mean, he's got some great publishings regarding public-private partnerships, and how you need to have a good public-private relationship, and I think he would hopefully have understood where I'm coming from here. You know, it just doesn't make sense if the private sector ain't gonna provide the best thing for the town, but public sector can't provide what makes the most sense for the town either, you know, financialize, so. Any questions? I know I have another person here, he had some concerns, but.
Or, I mean, you guys don't have to listen to me there, but if you don't wanna listen to me.
Yeah, we can give you the opportunity, just come up to the podium, and I know who you are, Roger, but for the record, introduce yourself and provide your address.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, lady.
Okay, I'm Roger Kistner, I own a shop on one eighty-five Melrose, and I've got concern that, that you guys are gonna start, you know, we're gonna have complaints about noise and that coming, and we've coming in the middle of the night with my truck, and with the trucks. Now, I'm just gonna let you guys know that if you guys do this, you know, and you guys try to put stipulations, I mean, it's not gonna be a real good deal, but when I talked to Steve this morning, and he informed me about what you guys were doing here, I found out about this just last Friday, but when he informed me about this, I don't know, why would you wanna put the apartment building over on the corner there? And what, to me, it's only common sense to have all your apartment buildings in one area, and then, because you guys wanna put townhomes and everything right in there, right? Is this what I'm taking that to, you know? If I'm wrong here, you guys straighten me out, but.
This is, this whole, everything from Wolverine Meadows to this proposed site is medium density, so it's all zoned the same, right, Steve?
Yes.
So it's all, that's just the lowest hanging fruit.
But you don't wanna put, what I'm getting at there, and you guys even admitted yourself when you told them that you didn't want it over here by the police station, but, but who's gonna, what I'm saying is, who's gonna wanna put townhouses next to the apartment in the corner? Because you guys just proved that you didn't want it there, you know, and if, am I wrong?
It would be similar housing to this, is what I'm saying, I mean, it could be that medium.
But if you put apartment building up, then you're gonna go with townhomes, or if somebody wants to put a town, or if somebody wants to put a house. Well, I don't think they're gonna wanna put the, right by the corner, right by the, what you say in the corner there, next to the apartment. And another concern is with the traffic there, when I back in, and that, I got people coming around me, and I just about had some accidents, you know? So you guys consider this, but I really think that you guys really didn't do your homework on this, I think you should have went with, to see what the public wanted on this, instead of you guys making the decisions for what the public thinks? And personally, I think you guys screwed up. And that, and, so if I'm wrong here, you guys let me know, because I'll be, I wanna talk to you guys, I'll be talking to you guys one-on-one. And that, but to me, you guys, apartment buildings, when you go in complexes there, the apartment buildings are all together, and I don't know why you'd want one over on the side there. Now, Steve said, yep, he could leave. Well, my response to that, and you guys aren't gonna like it, but you, if he could go with, you guys should have, you know, checked it out, and you want the apartment, it's only common sense, you want all the apartments together, you don't want them out in the corner, and then have everything, houses there, and then apartment, what are you gonna put apartment in the middle, and then houses around? This doesn't make sense, it's only common sense that you wanna put apartment buildings together, it's, it's common sense, and that, and you guys won't like it, but look, what I told Steve, if he doesn't like it there, you tell, you know, you got, I suggest you listen to Leighton on, you know, the petition there, and you take that into consideration, and that, but, but to me, you guys didn't do your homework, and, and I'm not real happy with that, so.
What homework, what homework didn't we do, Roger?
Well, did, did you guys, why didn't, you know, I didn't know about this till Friday, and, and what I'm saying is, maybe you should have stopped and asked, you know, and that, and, and why would you, he want, if, he wants a developer, you know, he wants to develop it there, yet that's fine, but it only makes common sense that you put the apartments together, and you got, you got the room there.
But there's apartments over here, there's apartments on this end of town, there's apartments all over town, they're not all together in town the way it is.
Well, but this here is a development, you guys, you guys, it's right there, you got the chance to do it, you don't wanna put, I.
So you're saying, you're saying you don't want Wolverine apartments here, and this one over here, and have that space in between?
Yeah, and then you want houses, and then, well then, if somebody wants to put apartment in the middle of the houses, are you gonna go for that?
It's just the lowest hanging fruit right now, Roger.
Huh?
Picture that whole parcel full of apartments.
Is that what you're?
The, the townhomes are, the vision for the rest of what you see behind Napa, that's where the townhomes are supposed to go.
You want apartments all the way along? Is this by my shop there?
It's on the zoning map, we're just, we're following how that land was zoned, how many years ago the city bought it?
Yeah, well, yeah, eight, when I put my shop up, this was all commercial, and then you guys bought the land, and you changed it to residential. And, and I wasn't happy about that either, but, but anyway, but what I'm saying is, you know, it only makes common sense that you keep your apartment, you got the chance to do it, keep the apartments together, and if you're gonna go put, unless you guys are gonna go all top, all apartments through the whole deal there, is that what you guys are planning?
Well, it's not single family homes, it's, it's medium density, so single family homes aren't, single family homes aren't gonna go in there.
Not gonna go in there?
Not single family, no.
But townhouses are, or like, like you got over here.
So Wolverine Meadows already has a future stage to double its length, to what's there.
Yeah, yeah, like, but you got to the east of it.
And, and also to the east to mirror that, so if you zoom, if you zoom out, that was a plan.
Yes, I see that.
Right, right, but that's years ago already, Roger.
But, but.
So we've got half, we've got half the parcel already ate up, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, and the development here to the east there, now this, apparently, like Steve said, this guy's got an option to buy that, he's got the first option?
He used to, it's, it's ran out.
The option it out, so that's, that's clear.
That's that five acres to the east.
Okay, so, but he's got an option to the south, which, you know, the developer has the option to the south there. Yeah, okay, but what I'm saying is, it would make more sense to put the apartment buildings, keep them together there while you have the chance. To me, it's only common sense, and that, and.
What, what goes on that corner where he wants to put the?
Townhouses, or what, but you, you know.
So housing is okay there, depending on what it is?
Well, you, you got apartments there, you don't wanna, when you go into the city, you don't have apartments in the middle of a housing development there.
And that isn't, that isn't a single family housing development? There's apartments that way down here, on one side of the street is apartments, and up the, the next, other half of the block, is single family homes.
Okay, then we can, then he can put, you can, well, you got, where Mike Master had one of them apartments there, that what you tore down, maybe that would be an idea for him to put the apartments over there.
That land's already sold, that's not, that's not an option.
But what I'm just saying is, I think you guys screwed up, and I may be wrong, but it, to me, it's only common sense.
Well, your two minutes are long, but thank you very much for sharing your advice.
Well, thank you.
Anything else on this, or do we wanna move on? Okay, moving on to eleven B, twenty twenty-fourth Street and Utility Improvement Project Financing Options, and I will turn it over to Steve.
Okay, well, Justin gave his wonderful report on our project plan for this year, and so looking at the, how we're going to finance this project, obviously, we're going to be looking at selling bonds to finance it, which is not uncommon for the size of a project. Two and a half million, as you recall, was what Justin was, their estimate is, and also he shared that their estimate for the assessment standard is seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So taking that into consideration, I've, I've asked our financial consultant to run some scenarios here for you, and it's on page one twenty-six of your packet, there's four different scenarios here, the first two, scenario one and two, and this is an item that I've been wanting to talk about, is the sale of that property out by our two lagoons or our holding ponds for our sanitary sewer. When I first brought this up last year, it's been probably about six months, and the council, you stated at that time that you wanted all the council members present for that discussion. Unfortunately, we've had some challenges with that, and unfortunately, tonight, Tony wasn't able to make it, but I'm putting it out there for a discussion, I guess, and depending on what, how you feel about that discussion without Tony's presence, but I did, the first two scenarios did take into consideration the sale of the land, it's a little over forty acres, about forty-two tubable acres right now, and taking just kind of a conservative estimate on the land sale, I used ten thousand an acre, so basically, I just rounded it off for, for ease here at four hundred thousand dollars for that land, and so taking that into consideration, again, the first two scenarios there reflect what our, ultimately, what our annual bond payments would be, taking into consideration, again, the assessments, and then also, there is a segment in the product that's related to storm sewer, and then the other two scenarios are without the sale of the land, three and four are. I'll go into some of more of the details, but I did invite, asked Justin Black to stick around a little bit, because back in two thousand eighteen, S C H did do an analysis as far as the wastewater treatment plant or facility out there is concerned, as far as what our capacity is at that time, and so, if it's okay, I'll ask Justin to share a little bit more detail about that.
Sure.
We did prepare a couple-page memo back in two thousand eighteen, and, and just looking back at some of my notes from, from six years ago, it was right when we were anticipating maybe some big growth from the college, so we were looking ahead to see what type of capacity we'd have if the city grew at a rapid rate, and I'm just gonna take us right to, to the second page and highlight what we call the storage volume of the ponds, and we took a look at how much additional capacity would we have, and it's about four hundred, what we call residential equivalency units, or four hundred homes, so we could add four hundred homes in Gaylord and still have capacity at the wastewater ponds, that'd take us right up to the limit. So I was trying to think of how we could put that in a frame of reference, I guess if we, if we took a look at Gaylord and said, let's, what if we grew ten houses a year? Ten houses a year, that'd be forty years worth of growth. And I guess I don't know what we've been growing the last couple of years, but there's a fair amount of capacity out there. I think the other side of the equation would be, what about Minnesota Plution Control Agency requirements on discharge, different requirements on treating the different pollutants within the waste, there's nothing on our doorstep right now from a permitting standpoint as far as additional requirements, we can't look out that far into the future, we know that the requirements are gonna get more restrictive, not less, but there are things that we can do with the existing ponds to help meet some of those requirements, some aeration, we can look at some pre-treatment, I guess, in those different scenarios, I don't see a scenario where we'd increase the pond sizes to meet more restrictive requirements. If anything, if the requirements got to a very restrictive level, we'd probably have to go away from ponds and look at a mechanical plant, and now we've talked about that, but again, that's, that's not on the horizon in the near future, that would be out quite a ways. If we were to build a mechanical plant, it may not be in that location on those forty acres, it might be in a different location by the pump station or by the brush pile, that's yet to be determined. So really looking a long ways out into the future with this, but it's a good process to take a look at these things, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the analysis we did a few years ago, or, or anything else related to wastewater, I guess.
Thank you for the information.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, anything else on that, Steve?
So that's basically one option, we, we do have some monies in probably like in our eight oh one fund, which is our capital outlay fund that we use for capital projects, we don't have at this point in time an excessive amount of money in there, we probably could dedicate like a hundred thousand dollars to the project, again, but you're looking at a two and a half million dollar project, so that's not an excessive amount of money, but it is another option. As far as our water and sewer funds, as you recall, we're, we're in fairly a healthy position, but we also have our project coming up on Thirteenth Street next year, and our, our costs are gonna be really related to water and sewers, so if we were going to utilize any of our reserves, so to speak, for a project, it'd probably be that project, because that's, right now, Justin helped me, but I think we're looking at, as far as the city's share of the cost on that's about a million dollars, maybe just a little over.
Yes, yeah, just a little over a million dollars will be the city's share, and like Steve said, most of that is sanitary sewer and water main related.
So that might be an option for next year, when we're talking about that project, we can take a look at where we're at as far as those funds are at that particular time, and then maybe if we are in a position, we could potentially use some of those reserves. So at this time, we don't have a lot of options here outside of property taxes, again, as I put in the memo there, went through each one of those four scenarios there, the first two, again, were with the sale of the land, they're for terms of fifteen years and twenty years, so the first scenario's for a fifteen-year term, and that looks at about a six point three percent increase in property taxes, scenario two, which is twenty years, that's five point two, and then if we don't look at any to sale the land, scenario three was like an eight point three percent, that's at fifteen years, and then scenario four, at a twenty-year term on the bond, would be six point eight. So it is somewhat of a significant increase for this project as far as property taxes are concerned, we will be looking at an interest payment this year, I did put some monies in there, projecting that we were gonna have to make an interest payment on the bond, so we do have that in our budget for this year, so that's there. so we do have that in our budget for this year, so that's there. But we'd be looking at a principal and interest then, coming up in the future on this project. So basically, this evening, my question is, do you want to pursue or consider looking at the sale of the land? And also, it would be helpful if we're gonna be looking at a fifteen or, or twenty-year bond term, which one would we be looking at? We won't be needing the bond proceeds yet for a little time here. Probably wouldn't be looking at the sale until about June or so, probably end of June. We'll probably try to hold that off as long as we can, because we don't want to pay any more interest than we have to.
My concern, you sell that land, it's a one-time deal. And so, yeah, we save this time around, but what's gonna happen next time we have a big project? And we have the money, then we're just gonna bond more at that time and cost us, I mean, at one point or another, it's gonna, gonna cost us. Whether it costs us now and we even it out, or if we reduce this one and the next time, it's gonna maybe hit us harder.
And then the sale of the land, is there, do we know, are there people that might even be interested in it? And I know there's an, you know, assessed approximate amount of money that we can get per acre, but what if that isn't what we get? Or that's offered to us?
Mark, maybe you can chime in on this. I believe before we do the sale, are we required to get an appraisal done on the land?
I mean, from the city council's perspective, we have an obligation to get fair market value for the property. And so, in every different context, that's gonna mean something a little bit differently. And in this case, dealing with valuable, large tract of farmland, it's a different proposition than, say, selling a vacant building downtown or, you know, trying to value, you know, a vacant tract of land. So I think an appraisal probably would be a good idea here. Some other ways that we could value the land would be to hire a real estate broker, and they can give a market evaluation. It's a little different proposition. But in terms of if we have a statutory obligation to get this property appraised, that, no, we don't. But again, if we're, the city is gonna go down this path of selling a valuable asset, I think we really do need to have a good sense of how much it's worth. And the best way to do that is to pay for an appraisal. They can be kind of pricey, so people tend to shy away from them. So if we're not willing to spend the thousand dollars on an appraisal, then we definitely want to get a real estate broker involved who can give us a market evaluation, at least give their sort of anecdotal recommendation on how much it would cost.
Last year, I, I did make a call to the county assessor's office just to get a feel for what the farmland was selling for, and it ranged anywhere from, you know, very low, below ten thousand dollars an acre to up to fifteen thousand. So that would be a phone call we can, we can certainly make, again, just to get an idea of what at least land is going for in Cibley County, similar tilable land.
What did you say we have for next year with that thirteenth street east, as far as funding for that?
We, we're likely looking at a bond for that. I just was mentioning that we possibly could utilize maybe some of our water and sewer reserves to assist, kind of spend down the project before we would bond for it.
I guess that, that's why I'm asking, if we, if we put this one hundred thousand dollar into this project, then are we gonna have to bond more next year for that one? I mean, where's that?
I mean, if you don't want to sell the, I mean.
I, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm just asking a question. Let's say, once, once we sell that and use it, it's gone. You know, then we don't have that.
I just don't see the public use for it, because we can't identify a public use for it. And if, if we can't identify a public use for it in the next twenty-five years for the city of Gaylord, I, I just, I don't know what we're doing with it, besides renting it out. Which is fine, if that, if that's what we want to keep doing, renting it out and just move on.
What's everybody else's thoughts?
I could go either way.
Well, I can, I can kind of too. I'm just trying to work it out as to what, like I said, it's a one-time, one-time deal for us. Yeah, it's gonna save us money now, but down the road.
I think we always want to be careful about getting rid of.
Well, right, that's.
But I also agree with what Chad's saying. What else would this land ever be used for?
Yeah.
If it's not a pond, then what do we need it for?
Something to think about. I think, you know, it, it's like, how far out do you want to think about it? That's, I think, what's hard for me, so. Yeah, maybe we don't need it in the next twenty years, then do we just not worry about it because we don't care what happens after that? Or do we have to try to look out even further? Like, is there a mechanical plant that will have to be built? And then can we build that on the pond? Probably not. So then where does that go?
We'll pay it three times as much to get it back.
That's what I'm worried about, yeah.
Yeah, that's a.
I mean, that would be, that's where I'm sitting, is like, how far out do we look? I understand that it, it would be a long time before we'd have to look at the pond, having to have something more done with it. But I don't know, I mean, what's gonna happen? I don't know.
That's the thing you don't know.
Yeah, and then in twenty years, the council's gonna get how they screwed up.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. That's what I said, maybe then you don't have to worry about it. I don't know.
Don't know.
How do, how does that, like, with these apartments going up, how does that factor into the capacity out there? And we talk like.
Yeah, I wondered about that.
Ten single-family homes for the next forty years would be all right, but now you start taking this project we're talking about, Wolverines would build another one, and, and we'd get more, how, how rapidly is that gonna?
And that, yeah, that I can't answer. I, I guess, you know, it's a little bit of a crystal ball. I mean, do we think, you know, the, the one on the table right now is sixteen units? So sixteen, and then if Wolverine would double, that'd be another forty, let's say, so.
So you're talking of that four hundred-some units right there, you got fifty-some already eaten up in them two projects.
You could. But if that can, will that contain?
Well, right.
That's, I think that's the question.
Right.
Even if you say, so we got four hundred, four hundred units potentially, even if you said twenty a year, every year for the next twenty years. I don't know if I can, it'd be great for the city of Gaylord, but I don't know.
And I would see that's gonna, no.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the way you gotta look at it. Every year, we've kind of got a, a bunch happening right now, but is that gonna happen every year for the next twenty years? The other thing I will mention is, when you're talking about the volume of the ponds, I know Ty's done a really good job of bringing to your attention the inflow and infiltration. That's eating up some of your capacity. So over the next twenty years, if we can continue working to get that down, that increases the amount of homes that you can build. Because that's, that's eating up pond capacity is when you get all that clear water heading in there. So that's all I can say. Tough decision.
It is, and it's hard to predict the future, you know, in twenty years. Let's say our capacity does grow, right? And, but will our ponds even be allowed anymore? Or will we be in the point where we need a mechanical plant? And like Justin said, that mechanical plant can go anywhere. It's not gonna probably go out where the ponds are, so we don't need the land. It's just hard to know what's coming.
Well, and, and we don't, we know land is an asset that's probably not gonna go down in value. You sell it now, and in ten years, it might be worth twenty thousand an acre, then we'll be like, oh, we should have, better we didn't have that yet. I, I don't know, it's, it's a tough call. I just, I, I, I guess I'm on the fence with it too, as far as, I mean, what.
That would be the, like, to the point of the mechanical plant, if you would have to go to that, where would it go? And then would we have to buy land to put that on? Or do we have enough land that it could go?
Justin, hypothetically, where would the mechanical plant go?
You know, it, as far as the footprint, you're probably, if we're building a mechanical plant, you're probably only looking at a couple acres that you would need. So I mean, just a small area. You know, you could put it, we could probably squeeze it in where the brush site is. You know, I know Ty and I have had some discussion about putting it on the, the other side of town, because we actually pump the sewer from tenth street all the way around town over to the ponds. So I mean, you could, you could put it over there, you wouldn't have to pump it as far.
What happens to the acreage of the ponds?
You know, that, that's a good question. If you go to a mechanical plant, you don't need the ponds. So there would probably be some mitigation there to decommission those, drain them out, fill them in. So I, I suppose there's a scenario there somewhere is where part of those existing ponds could be your new mechanical plant, because you, you, you wouldn't need those. And that's.
I was thinking.
Build on them until you decommission and fill them in and all that.
Yeah, there would be, there would be some coordination there. You know, I think the, the other thing that Ty just mentioned to me in the back of the room is, I mean, there is movement afoot to do a regional treatment site in Winthrop, and I, I think most of you are already aware of that. I don't know where that stands. It's in the very, very early stages. But there is discussions about doing regional treatment in Winthrop, and depending on whether that moves forward, that maybe plays into the equation too, as to whether, if there's a regional plant over there, then the Gaylord would pump all of their waste to that regional plant. So I think there's some, some different unknowns, but yeah, a, a mechanical plant would need a much smaller footprint, a couple of acres. Quite honestly, we, you, you probably wouldn't put it on the forty acres, because it's actually south of the ponds. It's kind of down. It would probably cost you more. You'd want to have it a little bit closer to the city. So maybe you'd need to buy a couple of acres somewhere else. But all good questions. There's answers to all of the questions. I just don't have them right now. It, it would probably take some development to, to, you know, another question that I'll, I'll just mention that, that has come up in the past is what if a, a big industry comes to town, like another Michael Foods, that has high waste? And Steve and I have talked about that. In those types of situations, when that industry comes to town, they would do their own pre-treatment. They would have to build a plant. They couldn't just overload the city's plant. It wouldn't. So that kind of takes that scenario out of the equation as far as what if. And again, that would be a great problem for the city to have if another Michael Foods wanted to come to town and we had to deal with wastewater. That would be a great growth for the community.
Maybe we should just wait another year and see, because we have another project, I mean.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, do we just want to?
Twenty, the scenario for probably twenty-year bond typically is what we've been doing.
Given the size of the project, I think in this case, you know, it might be. Usually, I'd like to recommend that you go with something less, so you can, you know, twenty years is a very long time. It's hard to see the end sometimes when that's gonna get paid off. And I, sometimes I'd rather deal with the pain and get it done with, and then you can move on to another project, because it frees up some monies for something else. But given it's a two and a half million dollar project, seven hundred and thirty thousand worth of assessments, still quite significant.
I think most of them have been, I mean, we're getting to the end. We've been building for fifteen years doing that.
Gaylord is doing very well as far as that is concerned.
But the, the, on the three, or on scenario three, it would be, the levy would be less, right? And you'd save over the term of, it looks like you'd save about three, four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, when you're saving on interest, yes. And you don't have to absolutely make a decision on this tonight. I'm just looking for a little direction here. Mainly, the land was kind of the big one. The fifteen or twenty years, you know, we can certainly bring this back when, when all the council members are here too.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, let's do that.
Agreed.
Okay, so no action on that. Moving on to eleven C, draft ordinance to allow additional park hours for the pavilion events.
Yes, Mark drafted this draft, this ordinance. Again, it's just a draft. But basically, this came up in our discussions with the pavilion and setting the policy, the rental policy in place. So right now, our park hours, they basically are closed from ten P M. until six A M. And so, we know that they're, we're looking at events here that they have to be out of the park by one o'clock, out of the pavilion. And so, that's obviously gonna exceed that. And so, Mark put this language in here, just quick read it. Or to attendees of any, any event at the city's Oaks Lakeside Park at Oak Tree Park. So any attendees at the pavilion, basically, at that park, would be able to, that would be an exception. Now, since putting this out, I was having a conversation with staff, and they were informing me too. There's been an understanding over the years with baseball games as well. There's times when some of those games have either gone past ten o'clock, or at least there's been fans and players staying in the park past ten P M. My question is, do you want to incorporate anything into the language for that, or what's your thoughts on that?
We probably should.
Yeah, can we just put, or any city event, would that fall under it?
Well, the ball, I don't know if the ball, ballgames are considered city events per se. Any suggestions?
Yeah, I mean, I guess you could just state, like, approved events at the park.
There you go.
And that would include stuff at the city's pavilion, and then also, I mean, technically, the baseball team is a tenant of the city, so it's kind of tacitly approved, but that's a little too much context for an ordinance. So I think it's safe to say, if we just put events at, at the park, that would be fine.
Sounds good.
I, I just, I don't know if I'm reading this wrong. The amendment there. Shall be amended to contain the following. Shall be closed from ten P M. until six A M. unless prior approval from the police chief is obtained or to attendees in an event. Not following what that's saying there.
So the, the portion that is not underlined is how it reads now. So basically, the park is closed, everybody from ten P M. until six A M., unless the police chief, unless Charlie approves a certain request, whether it's an event or a group of people. But that's kind of onerous to require each person to get special police chief approval. So, or to anybody attending an event at the, it's written in here as the pavilion. But it's kind of, I guess, trying to enforce that is a little tricky. I guess if a police officer is asking, why are you in the park, they would have to rely on the reason that they're giving. So it's a little bit informal in that respect. Are you saying maybe there's a clearer way to state that?
Well, I, I guess it just, it, it makes it sound like you need to, if you don't get the police chief approval, it's, you obtain it from the attendees is the way I read it. And I guess that's why I'm not following. So if they don't necessarily need the police chief approval.
It's an, it's an or, so that there's two exceptions in there. It's either getting police chief approval or you're attending an event at the pavilion. So if that's not super clear, maybe there's some better language we can find that kind of separates the two exceptions.
Is it clear to everybody? I'll, maybe I'm just looking at it.
Would you have to include the baseball field, though?
Well, I'm wondering if you can just take off the pavilion and just do the Oak Tree Park.
Yeah, I, I think that's kind of what I was saying to the mayor, that if that's the direction you want to go for any of the events, but they are two separate exceptions. Either you get the okay of the police chief, or you're exempt because you're attending an event at the park.
I see.
So we could just take off the pavilion. For that specific, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, because I would think that would cover events of the, both scenarios.
I took it that whoever was, like, renting the pavilion, for example, had to get the approval from the chief to have it open longer, be there longer. That's how I was reading this. So you're saying each individual person either has approval or they're attending the event.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion to schedule a public hearing for seven P M. on March twentieth for the purpose of considering an ordinance to extend the Oaks Lakeside Park hours. It should be Oak Tree Park hours for pavilion rental events.
Yeah, you could rework that.
Yeah, we gotta rework that, so. Motion by Iker. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven, resolution amending the twenty twenty-four fee schedule.
We mistakenly left off the Canada Lloyd fees when we, when the council approved the fee schedule back in January. And so, proposes to add those back in there. We, we actually had them in our fee schedule last year. It was a, it was a mid-year amendment that was made, and then just accidentally left them off. So again, the background investigation fee is at four hundred dollars, and the annual license fee is at two hundred dollars. That's what you said last year.
Okay, so we are looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven, a resolution amending the twenty twenty-four fee schedule.
So move.
We have a motion by Kufal. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Eleven E is a resignation on the Lake Titlo Beautification Committee. And there's an attachment from Molly Malinkovich. We just need a motion to accept Molly Malinkovich's resignation. We just need a motion to accept Molly Malinkovich's resignation from the Lake Titlo Beautification Committee. Motion by Iker, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko, any further discussion or comments? I'll just say thank you to Molly, I know she was instrumental in us getting a grant from the D N R and speaking with us at the state capitol, so I want to certainly thank her for all of her efforts. Then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We don't have anything else on the agenda, so we all take...
One comment, just at the beginning of the meeting, Wade let me know that our meeting was streamed both platforms again today, so...
Oh, good.
Everything seems to be working good again.
Good, that's two meetings in a row, so that's good news.
Motion to...
Are they televised?
Yes.
Thank you for that, Steve.
I just wanted to mention real quick, too, that the dirt pile issue is still going on. I know Steve's looking in on it and probably give the council an update soon.
Yeah, I heard a little bit about that, but yes, I'll look forward to that update, too.
There was concerns from business owners out there.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn from Iker, do we have a second? Seconded by Kufal, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.